I call to order a regular meeting of the planning commission. Fellas, roll call.
Chairperson Bob McCool?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie?
Here.
Commissioners Fellow Sergeant here, David Harper?
Here.
Jerry Malia?
Here.
Ben Miller?
Here.
Jason Reese?
Here.
Anthony Stewart? Steve Whitty? Planner Stephen Williams?
Here.
Att- Attorney Dan Harvey?
Here.
Alright, we have time for a public comment on any consent agenda or non-agenda items. We do have one agenda item coming up. We'll make comment on that later. If there's any comments outside of this agenda, now's the time to speak. Seeing none, we'll go on to... Oops, my mic on. We'll go on to consent agenda. We have minutes from October 2nd. Does anybody have any comments or changes?
I do not.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Who is that? Okay, oops, I forgot.
Commissioner Harper?
Commissioner Harper.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Miller. All in favor?
I have seen.
And?
Yep.
Anonymous?
Anonymous with one extension.
Alright, so I'm gonna open a public hearing and adoption of a resolution approving an application to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Rock Creek Ranch filing 24. It's the former land Rover site. From regional activity center, RAC zoning, to community activity center, CAC zoning. We have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. And our public hearings open. And this is an application by the town?
Yeah.
From the town, so?
I'll present.
Let Stephen present.
Can you turn off the light, please? Good evening, Stephen Williams Town Staff. As stated, this application concerns rezoning amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch PD regarding the former Land Rover site which is pictured. The town is the applicant for this proposal, which is to restore the property to commercial activity zoning, or CAC zoning, per the use agreement that was, that governed the original Land Rover approval from 1998. The site is currently zoned RAC Regional Activity Center. The subject property is located near the intersection of Colton Road and Rock Creek Parkway, directly south of Rock Creek Village Commercial Complex, which includes the town Safeway. Lot 1, Block 1 of the Centennial Venture 4 subdivision was created in 1998 as part of a joint application that included a rezone request and a final plat site plan for the development of the property into a Land Rover dealership. The two zoning designations associated with this application, RAC and CAC, are listed here and on the following slide. These designations accompany a PUD map that clarifies where the designated planning areas referenced in line item 1 were intended to develop within Rock Creek. And that's, I don't know if you can see the cursor or not, but planning areas here are shown for RAC zoning. And the map, which you can't quite see, but we'll enlarge here shortly, included on the left for reference. The subject property location is indicated by the yellow star. So this general alignment, which used to kind of have a curve in the road, is Colton Road, and this is Rock Creek Parkway. So just southeast of that intersection is Planning Area 2, or 20, excuse me. And as reflected up here, Planning Area 20 wasn't intended for RAC zoning. As, as we enlarge that same area, you can see that Planning Area 20 was intended for either CAC zoning or R2A zoning. And that's consistent with what you see here. The CAC zoning designation includes Planning Area 20. The map also illustrates that the Rock Creek PUD intended for this entire intersection to either be Community Activities Center zoning, along with a mix of potential residential uses, which is indicated by the R2A and R2B zones. The Rock Creek PUD established three tiers of commercial zoning: regional, community, and neighborhood, scaled from most intense to least intense. The intent of each zone definition clarifies the uses intended to serve a more regional area where required, required RAC zoning, while uses intended to serve the community of Superior as a whole would receive the CAC zoning. And less intensive commercial uses geared for specific neighborhoods would be zoned in AC Neighborhood Activity Center. Consequently, when the Land Rover proposed to establish a dealership on the subject property in 1998, the parcel needed to be rezoned RAC before the proposed development could occur. And this Rock Creek Ranch Subarea Plan 19 was adopted to effect this change. The map insert shown on the diagram on the left also clarifies what was established zoning-wise in these areas. It's consistent with what the PD established and included a mix of CAC and residentially-zoned parcels. The cover sheet of the 1998 rezone request is illustrated here. This entire document is, was included with the materials for this application. The document clarifies that the proposed Land Rover use was defined as requiring the RAC zoning designation. On sheet 3 of these materials, the offer by Land, the Land Rover applicant to restore the CAC zoning to this property appears as finding a fact... Oops, I didn't switch the slide. As finding a fact 2 down here at the bottom, which was captured in the board's resolution for the proposal. So the owner essentially agreed to revert the zoning back to CAC zoning at any time in the future, if the Land Rover facility was not built initially, or if it ceased to operate at the site. This approval also culminated with the use agreement between the town and the property owner that was recorded at Boulder County. This agreement reiterated that the zoning of the property may revert to CAC should the Land Rover development never materialize, or the use vacate the site at some point in the future. And Land Rover did leave this site earlier this year, so the town is now seeking to act upon this agreement to restore the property to CAC zoning. In addition to the documents just discussed, both the staff memo for this application, as well as the applicant's narrative, address how the Land Rover concept dealership was unique and would function more like a destination retail use than a traditional car dealership. The applicant's narrative also reiterates the applicant's offer to return this property to CAC zoning should the Land Rover use end. So tradi-, like traditional applications, we've prepared a clouded diagram, or a clouded version of the approved PD on the, on the left, and then a clean version of, so the clouded version clarifies what changes need to, needed to occur. You can kind of see that there's a description here about the use that was amended. There was a formal legal description before it was officially platted. This is a meets and bounds legal description. Now it's just described as Lot 1, Block 1. And then the land use tables associated with the Rock Creek PD were updated from being current in 1998 to being current in 2018. And then generally, the rest of the changes are limited to eliminating references to the Land Rover dealership. So staff is recommending approval, that PC approve this resolution, thereby recommending that the town board approve the rezoning proposal as well. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And I also know that there are representatives from the current ownership here tonight that are planning on speaking through the public comment process.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I confirm just that the current, or the current property owner is the same property owner that signed the original development agreement? Do we know that they are?
That's my understanding, but I...
Any other questions for staff before I entertain public comment? Alright. I understand we have some folks from the public that'd like to speak on this agenda item. If you could limit your comments kind of around five minutes, that would be great.
Just a favor. Can you turn the lights up so I can see?
Sure. We can do that.
Thank you.
You bet. If you could give us your name and address.
Okay, my name is Jim Loftus, 8918 Katherine, that's with a K, Court, Boulder, 80303.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am a partner with a fellow by the name of Randy Nichols in Centennial Venture 1, who is the listed owner of the property. And we are the recipients of the notice from the town of Superior on the breach of development zoning and notice of rezone. I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. First, we're here tonight to, excuse me, take a legal exception to the October 12th notice, which is essentially telling us to shut down a tenant's business with whom we have a lease. And we have gone ahead and submitted a couple letters to, I guess the clerk now has them. And then the second reason I'm here is, the main purpose is in to see if we can find some common ground that would enable us to have the continued use as the property for an automotive dealership and for it not to be rezoned. I just want to give you a brief summary of the 20 years that we were here, just so you know how this came about. We did a build-to-suit for a dealer. We're not the original dealer. We were the real estate developer for the dealer that picked the location. And then we went through the process with him after he had chosen this location. So in 1999, April of 1999, 99, the dealer opened the premises. And Centennial Venture 7 was created to take a small ownership in the, in the dealership. In October of 99, Centennial Venture 1 was notified by BMW Financial that the dealer, this was five months, was out of compliance with BMW, and also out of compliance with Land Rover North America and numerous covenants. And in addition to that, we had, had some rent checks bounced, so. Land Rover notified, North America notified us that unless the dealer brought current all financial requirements, the dealership could continue under limited operations until Land Rover North America found an existing Land Rover dealer to purchase the business and satisfy the delinquent financial obligations. My partner and I were not car dealers. We were real estate developers. In mid-December of 99, we notified, Centennial Venture 1 notified Land Rover North America that because no replacement dealer had been located and no rent had been paid to us since October, we would be sending them an eviction notice. In early January of 2000, Nichols and Loftus and this Centennial Venture 7 entity purchased the assets of the former dealer, Land Rover Boulder, and we renamed it Land Rover Flat Irons. CV7 brought current all the previous financial obligations to both the town of Superior and Boulder County. In 2006, the dealership was expanded by 5,000 square feet. And shortly after that was done, we built a small shopping center anchored by a Starbucks on the adjacent lot. In 2014, Land Rover Flat Irons was notified by Land Rover North America of the impending requirement that Land Rover and Jaguar brands be co-housed in the same facility. There would no longer be standalone, single-brand dealerships. We were also advised that a more visible location would be a requirement. We were given two years to find and contract for another location. And we did have an inquiry, or a couple inquiries with the town of Superior, and we were informed that no, there was no ground that was properly zoned that was close to US 36 for an automotive use. With me here are two fellows that have known quite a bit about the dealership. One is Ed Dobbs, who's been the center manager there for 18 years, has some relationships, has some relationship with the town, Chamber of Commerce, and so on. And he's going to tell you a little bit about our relationship with the town of Superior and our original desire to stay in Superior with an improved location. Also, Jacob Hawkins from David Hicks and Lambert, a retail broker, real estate broker, who has the listing for lease on that property, is here. And he's just going to describe the leasing activity that we had from the time that we found replacement ground in Broomfield to the time that we moved. So I'm gonna ask Ed to come up and say a few things.
Good evening, Ed Dobbs at 14861 Nighthawk Lane in Broomfield. Although I was a Superior resident for several years, probably from 2006 through 2011, up on 839 Sunlight Way. So thank you for allowing me to speak. It's good to see some familiar faces. I've sat on the executive board for the Chamber of Commerce before for the town of Superior. I know a lot of you. And this, I'm here just to speak about the relationship. We've always supported the town of Superior in all of their endeavors and initiatives that we could possibly help over the 18 years that I've been there. And I think it's always been a win-win. 80027 is still our top-selling zip code, so we still have a lot of customers in Superior, although the parts and service business does not reside here anymore. We still send a lot of Superior checks to, off to you, so thank you for that. But, you know, we've, we've supported the town in the past. I don't see that changing, because literally our, as you know, our new facility is only a mile away. So I had this conversation with Heather, who was in charge of the chamber up until recently, that she could always count on our support for whatever she needed and any other events that came up. So that's not changed, and I've, you know, stand by that. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed.
Good evening, Jacob Hawkins with David Hicks Lambert Retail Brokerage, and our address is 5750 DTC Parkway in Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. Our, our relationship with the property began in August of 2017. As Jim Loftus and Randy began finding a replacement location for the current dealership, we entered into a listing agreement on the current facility that included the retail buildings by the Starbucks, as well as the to-be relocated auto dealership. In August of 2017, the activity picked up more once the timing of the relocation was solidified. So starting in January of 2018, we started soliciting fairly significant interest in re-leasing the property. That interest came from a handful of qualified prospects. However, there's a common theme. We, we received interest from RPM Motorsports, European Auto Dealership, Greenide Motors out of Boulder, Get Part Motors out of Boulder, Opera Autobody and Collision Repair, the Denver Collection, which is, who's currently occupying the property today, and Caliber Collision. So of the seven interested prospects, they were all related automotive, either autobody, service, or sales. We did, we did receive a few handful of non-automotive-related properties, but those interests were fairly quickly and shortly dismissed for one reason or another. There was a law firm that expressed interest, but they ended up utilizing less expensive real estate at office spaces, is usually considered less than retail. They located closer to US 36. There was a non-for-profit donation center that wanted to utilize the drive-up bays for large donation items, furniture, you know, couches and things like that. There was a daycare provider, and they had concerns about the environmental condition of the property. There was a church that reached out to us to, to use the property, but that was after the lease had already been signed with the current tenant of the building. And then the last interest we had was actually from the town and called to check to see what was going on, to, to see about, about the building. There's three challenges that I would say related to re-letting it as neighborhood commercial retail. The actual dimensions of the, and we, we, we have a plan of the actual facility, the actual 15,500 square foot building. There's only about 25% of the building that would potentially be reusable in its current condition, and that's the showroom, right? It's open space. They have a few cars, those move out, and you've got, you know, that, that space can be utilized. Then about another 25% is, is back of the house in the parts department, where they actually house all of the kind of technical materials for the service department. And then there's the actual service base themselves. And that, the, the shop and the service bays and the lifts, I mean, they, they've got about six lifts in the facility that are, you know, below ground and hydraulic lifts. And that occupies about half of the remaining premises. So anyone come, looking to come in to do any sort of major renovation, it becomes cost prohibitive, really, at that point, to reutilize the existing building. And, and then the other, the other thing that, as you guys are well aware, you know, the current vacancy rates as you move yourself along from Colton down to 36, the corridor, some of it's been intentional with the redevelopment proposal at, at Broomfield or Flat Irons Marketplace. And then the mall has, has about 65, or some, sorry, 75,000 square feet of vacancy at the mall currently. There's 240,000 square feet available at Flat Iron Marketplace. That's obviously the proposed redevelopment, so some of that's been intentional. And then there's an additional about 30,000 square feet of retail vacancy along Colton from the site to the mall. So that totals about 350,000 square feet of vacancy, with this specific site being the most internal off 36. So those challenges would lead themselves to, you know, high-profile national retail-type uses would be more inclined to lease stuff closer to 36 that hasn't leased to date and is being redeveloped, repurposed. So those are some of the challenges that we would face in a potential rezoning effort to community retail. Though the interest we have being automotive, the, the other ancillary retail uses being not usually typically desirable, not generating sales tax, those types of things, the actual bones of the building leading itself to be both cost prohibitive, and then the, the current market vacancy in the corridor. Those are all challenges that, that we would face for the commercial rezoning to, to proceed. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just gonna sum up, just one minute.
Sure. Go ahead.
My summary is the town of Superior and Centennial Venture. We've had a relationship for 20 years, and we would like to continue that relationship on some sort of basis. We are willing to abide by virtually all the terms of the existing agreement, other than being solely Land Rover. And whether or not the community event, sponsoring community events still fits into your current real estate needs and plans, we would be open to additional restrictions if they are reasonable. And the only, my last closing comment is, is that there's probably some allure to doing away with the automotive use. The purpose of having Jacob up here talking about it is in the 17 or 18 months that, or 16 months that we had the property on the market, looking for somebody, virtually all the users were automotive. But I'm not sure that substitute use for automotive use is always the thing that works out. As you can see from the things that he described, is that if it wasn't automotive, it was autobody. And the rest of the proposed uses and calls were uses that would take dollars and cents that are way beyond what that, what that location would support. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. One more thing I would like to add is, I, you know, early on, three or four years ago, when this new town development started becoming a vision of the town, and there was actually a meet and greet scheduled by the developer, and I had asked him at that time, because I knew we were growing, if Land Rover had a possibility of moving up to this part of McCaslin, was told there'd be no interest in that. So, and I said there'd be, you know, probably two or three acres that we would need at least in size. And then again, I had asked Matt Magley if, this is several years ago, three or four years ago, if there'd be any other possibility along McCaslin for us to grow into, because I knew we were growing and we were running out of space. And he also said, no, there wouldn't be any chance of us moving up here. And I just wanted to make sure I got those in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Lamachia, 2701 South Monroe Street in Denver, 80210. I'm the proprietor of the Denver Collection at Flat Irons. I currently hold a lease and also a purchase option on the here referenced property at 1500 Colton Road. Just want to take this opportunity to speak briefly as to who we are, what we do, and how we feel we provide a much-needed benefit to the municipality and the surrounding neighborhoods. Little background on us, we're a family-owned and operated independent dealership, has been in the automotive industry for four generations. We've owned and operated seven franchise dealerships and one independent dealership, all of which but one are located in a small rural town similar to Superior. We know and we believe in operating in this type of a community, because it's what we're used to and was, is what we've done for generations. We specialize in late-model foreign and domestic vehicles that usually fall in the $12 to $30,000 price point. These vehicles are the exact type of vehicle commonly purchased in this area, per DMV registration records that we attained prior to this venture. In the short time we've been operating at the Colton Road location, we've sold a good number of vehicles to residents of the Rock Creek subdivision, including primary vehicles, secondary vehicles, and vehicles for children of residence, both in high school and then soon heading off to college. In addition to the sale of these late-model pre-owned vehicles, we intend to operate a service center where all makes and models of vehicles can be serviced. This type of service, service operation does not currently exist in this area at the capacity we are able to fulfill. National repair chains that send profits outside the area, such as Firestone and Big O, are limited in scope and ability. Our expertise, combined with this facility's capacity, would fill a much-needed void in this area and be of a long-term benefit to the surrounding neighborhoods. We are a very good neighbor, a good steward of the area. We've gotten to know not only our neighbors, but other business professionals, and often direct visitors coming to our location from outside the area to grab lunch, dinner, coffee at locally-owned establishments. It's just some of the draw we provide, but it's a benefit. It's unfortunate that we're stuck in the middle of the situation, and we really don't want to have to look for a new location. So I'm sure you can imagine, it's not easy to pick up and move a business of our size and scope. and scope. We've invested a lot into this opportunity, and we plan to invest a lot more into the community in the coming years. Like I said, we're family-owned, we looked at this as our forever for the next 20 or 30 years, and that's how we've kind of taken this on, if allowed to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay.
I'm the president of the Summit Rock Creek Homeowners Association, and I live at 2855 Rock Creek Circle, Unit 115, Superior. I mainly came tonight because I didn't really totally understand what the zoning change meant. My feeling is that Land Rover's been a good neighbor to us, and we own a section, a small section of land that runs in front of our retaining wall, all the way around behind the prior Land Rover dealership. So obviously, it would be of great interest to us what ultimately ends up there in the terms of our townhouse homeowners looking down on that from their townhouses. I guess my feeling is that we've had Land Rover there, and it sounds like the collections group would be, would be good as well, and I haven't seen anything adverse to date. I'd be a little bit concerned about auto collision or auto servicing, that it looks decent and doesn't adversely impact, you know, our townhouse homeowners looking down on it. That would be my only concern, so I just thought I'd offer those suggestions.
Thank you. Ryan, any other comment? All right. All right, Stephen, I guess your opportunity to, if you want to respond to anything that's been said, or if we can continue discussion?
No, I don't have a response.
All right. I can close the public hearing at this point, or no? Do you have a few questions?
Sure. The applicant?
I'm curious if the property owner reached out to the town in an attempt to renegotiate this development agreement, or did they kind of pursue some of these, understanding the provisions in the development agreement, knowing that they were breaching the development agreement? Do we...
I mean, as far as I understand, I don't believe so. However, I don't know if there's any, you know, if anybody reached out to anybody at my firm, but as far as I know.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
The first, Jim Loftus, the first that we knew is when, that we had violated the agreement, was when we received the notice from the city. And then we went to our records, and unfortunately, they weren't 20-year records, so we asked an attorney in Boulder by the name of Bridget Page to talk to the law firm that sent us the notice. They sent the backup documentation, recognized our signatures, and then, that was on a Friday, and the documents came on a Monday or Tuesday. And the other attorney representing the town was Kendra, I can't remember her last name. And the question was, our attorney, Bridget, asked if we should come in and sit down at that time and discuss things with the town representatives, and it was suggested that for the time being, that it be between the lawyers. And my experience is, is when somebody says that, then you get a lawyer. So that's what we did.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? So this is, I mean, we're, we have an application from the town at this point, that we're entertaining the legalities of how this happened, or thinking Dan, or sort of outside of this applicant, out of this request, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So the, the legal things that are happening currently, they're sort of outside of this request from the town.
Right, what you're looking at at this point would be the zoning.
Other than, yeah, at this point, we're just faced with, considering this application and...
That's correct.
Our agreements that show that this would revert back to CAC upon Land Rover vacating space, that's what we're sort of faced with at this point. I think it would be appropriate to, you know, discuss this a little bit and find, you know, if we have suggestions we want to make along with our recommendation to the board when to consider this, from what we've heard tonight, and...
So just make sure to close the public hearing, if you're kind of opening discussion portion.
Sure. Yep, we'll do that. So with that, any other?
I guess I had a question for Stephen. So if we approve this and it goes back to the previous zoning, is the current use that's on a property, is that not conforming and they have to vacate?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. That's the outcome of this.
That would be our recommendation to the board, the board would make that decision, not us.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So any other questions to the applicant before, which is a little odd situation, we don't typically entertain an application from the town itself, but sometimes.
I mean, I'm not aware of any complaints concerning the applicant. In terms of the legal side of things, I know counsel for the owner has presented a letter in the record indicating their position concerning the rezoning itself. I'm sorry, attorney for the owner has presented a letter that was just presented for the record concerning their position. You know, Kendra has also been, I believe, in discussion as well concerning that. You know, I mean, essentially, you know, the town's position is that the development agreement is, you know, effective, and that, you know, that this rezoning is triggered by provision within the development agreement.
Dan, do you have your microphone on?
It is, yeah.
Maybe no one here has the answer to this, but I'm curious, the way the original development agreement was worked up, did no one contemplate that if one dealership closed and this was built for a car dealer, what if another one came along? You know, it seems weird that between both the landowner and the town, you know, why have a, why have an agreement for just Land Rover? Why was that dealership special?
So we can pull up the document if you want to go through it in specifics, but a lot of the language about why Land Rover was unique came from the application itself. And, I mean, the terms of the impacts, the amount of trips that were generated to the site, those type of things were what was discussed, in terms of why this use was different than a normal. And they, they catch it as a concept dealership versus a traditional dealership. So the application in and of itself defined Land Rover as unique in the town, went off of that type of analysis to conclude that, you know, this was exceptional, but not as impactful as, you know, a traditional car dealership, so.
Okay. Like assumptions that there's fewer trips, more...
Yeah, and that they would do, you know, they would be more concerned about the lighting, it wouldn't be as impactful, those type of things, you know, so.
And there were negotiations, if you read through, I mean, there were just agreements that were made with this, with Land Rover.
Correct.
Sort of presents them as a really good neighbor. It's probably appropriate if that's going to continue with somebody else, that those negotiations may need to happen again, but...
Would you like me to pull the agreement up?
Sure.
Or did you?
Yeah, give me one minute, but I'll, yeah, I'll let you come up and bring that up.
So this is the entire 42-page document, but we'll scroll through to... So here's, you know, one of the conclusions of the recommendation, that it's not as impactful of a typical regional use, and that both, I mean, if you go through the whole thing, it's too long to kind of recite now, but if you go through the whole thing, Land Rover recognized that it was more of a regional use, and, you know, if you go through the actual PUD, there is no designated automotive use, so it had to be a decision that was made that, and the intent of the RAC zoning is that it draws a regional, you know, it's not just Superior residents that are going to come and shop, and the business model isn't reliant upon just the community buying these vehicles. But we go back into...
And there was an exception made for this zoning as well, right? Because by, even at this zoning level, you know, we're not, automotive and service dealerships are not permitted even under RAC.
It wasn't specifically allowed, but I mean, I think that the town agreed, and I think that the exceptions were really made in order to justify its use within CAC zoning. That's how I read the application versus...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was trying to get to their application.
So this is the applicant's narrative, and they go through and talk about how Land Rover is quite different. So here's, you know, this section that talks about the parking, talks about the low level of lighting, it talks about somewhere in here, you know, just why they're locating there and that folks actually, they don't need to be located off of a highway, that type of stuff. And then, here's in bold, the agreement about the, so to Commissioner Miller's question, I didn't see anything in this document that, that really speculated about how the building itself would be reused should they go away, or contemplated the difficulty in that. It was just that this was different and exceptional, and, you know, if the use actually ceased to exist, then it more than likely wasn't appropriate for another auto dealership to be in there. They talked about why it wasn't named after Superior, talks about the community partnership that they were agreeing to, and there's another section, I think, oh, like evening hours, hours of operation, that type of stuff. And then here's the section I was referring to, or trying to get to, where they, you know, they outline in columns how they are distinct from a typical dealership.
And Land, I mean, and Land Rover was a great community partner, I mean, they were, they've been on chamber board for many years, they've been, had a great relationship, had, well, he's done a lot more than what was said, so.
Is there any other possible use for this site? We don't, I mean, I didn't go through and exercise to, there are certainly other uses available for the site, the entire, you know, village, the Safeway Development to the north is owned the same way. So, I mean, I think it's more of a question as the applicant or the owner has clarified as just finding the right user for a building of that type. But CAC zoning allows for quite a bit of use.
Can any business other than a car-related business use the building without doing massive changes to it?
And I, yeah, I don't know that that's, I'm not totally related to this request. I mean, this is a zoning request, and I, I think that's a financial question, probably more so than a zoning change question, but there was, you had one additional comment. So before I close the public hearing, I'll, yeah, I'll entertain one or two more comments in response.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry, I just wanted to remind you, not that we didn't realize what the dealer was doing, but the, we were only the real estate owners, Nichols and Loftus. We were not the dealership owners, we were not the person selling the city on the dealership. Five months later, six months later, we were the dealer, not planned, but we were not the group that made the presentation, but we were the group that owned the real estate. Okay? So that I want you to know, and I think I said in my original comments, and in my summation, that we'd be willing to come back as Centennial Venture One to sit down with the city and go through some of these things, but the thing that you need to know is that Land Rover, in the 20 years, changed their image. It went from this very outdoorsy, mountain-y, drive this and that. I don't know if you've seen the facility that was built on Church Ranch, but it looks like NASA. So you can see they've gone from the good old warm hug, give you a hug, you know, do some yodels and stuff like that, now we're all, we're all spaceships. So it's the whole, the whole concept of what Land Rover was then, 20 years ago, is completely different now, so the dealership, the dealership look is not something that would have survived there.
Thank you. One more? Go ahead.
My name is Tom Raggedetti, my address is 950 17th Street, Denver, and I'm the lawyer for Mr. Loftus and Mr. Nichols. And I should probably also mention, I'm a city planner as well as a lawyer, and I've been doing this for 45 years. I listen to each of you asking questions, and they're exactly headed in the direction that I would hope this would head, or could head, and that is, this is not a facility that's easily adaptable to another use. It's a facility that's relatively unique, it would be very expensive to change for a new use that's not automotive-related. And what I would hope is that you would recommend against a rezoning at this point, to allow an opportunity for the current owners and the current tenant to negotiate with the city, to set a set of parameters and conditions under which you continue to operate as a dealership, not as a body shop, and go on being the same good neighbor it's been for 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a couple more questions for Stephen?
I guess it's either for, Stephen or for the attorney.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, a couple different options on potentially moving forward, I feel a little, you know, it seems to me that the development agreement clearly is, you know, been breached, and that is on, you know, that is what that is, and that being said, you know, moving forward with the application as submitted seems like legally we're able. Do you feel, though, that we're potentially premature as a town with an attempt to possibly renegotiate a development agreement, or, you know, do a whole new development agreement with new parties on the legal end? I'm not, you know, the best way to do that, being that, you know, as the resident had mentioned, that Land Rover has been, you know, an okay neighbor for those residents, it's kept the building occupied and the site occupied, I don't think anybody would have concerns, you know, had Land Rover stayed for another 20 years, if we negotiated a new development agreement with a gentleman who spoke, is there, is that something that town staff feels like is reasonable to hit pause on this application, continue to another date, or...
Well, I mean, I think that's kind of your determination, you know, that, and if you do feel like you'd like to provide time for, you know, the town and the owner to kind of develop, you know, work on a new development agreement, then you would... you know, work on a, a new development agreement, then you would, you would recommend, you know, denial if that was something you wanted to do. But I mean, I think that's, that's essentially your recommendation at this point.
But aren't we in breach of the agreement? I mean, what happens if we recommend denial from a legal perspective, right? The agreement has been, the agreement is no longer in effect or, you know, right? So the terms of the agreement would provide that we rezone it. So to deny it then feels problematic because then we have an agreement that's no longer in effect and we have a rezoning that we haven't, right? So we have kind of nothing left to stand on at that point as a town.
Well, I mean, potentially you could also, um, you know, approve potentially with the condition of, um, you know, which would then be a rezone, but then kind of a renegotiation of the development agreement as well. So, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, it is a, a recommendation at this point, so um, you know, and I think you either have the, the option of, you know, approving the, the rezoning as is, you know, approving with conditions or, or denying at this point. I mean, if, um, if there is a recommendation of denial, you just need to make sure that that, the reasoning for doing so would be on the record. Okay?
So I guess then Stephen, maybe your thoughts related to possible negotiation with a new automotive entity? I just don't wanna get in.
Well, and he's got, you've got to play two roles here. Is that fair? I mean, you're playing a staff role. I mean, this is, this is an applicant, this is a town as an applicant, right? And advice to the planning commission as our, as our purpose.
Yeah, no, the only thing I guess I'd add is that, uh, I mean, and maybe it's more of a question for Dan, but it seems like if you guys are not certain that you want to recommend approval of the rezoning and you think that more time is necessary. It seems like you could recommend that the board table it. And take more time in order to, in order to, to, to evaluate the situation. So, I mean, and, and to kind of respond to whether or not staff's given this much thought, this is the first uh, I've heard of the request was through this meeting. It wasn't before the meeting, so um, I don't have too much. I mean, other than the same thoughts you guys probably have in terms of it is a difficult use to, or a building to, you know, find a, a new use for. But this was a, a town requested uh application, so the town is making this recommendation and I think the board is expecting to hear it next month. And um, if you guys feel that they should take more time and, and see what the opportunities are, or see whether or not the use can be, or the development agreement can be rewritten into a, a level that everyone's comfortable with. That's, that's a reasonable recommendation from planning commission.
No, recommendation to, well, you said to table it, but I mean, we're faced.
You're recommending that they table it so they can make the decision. Cause I think if you table it, it just means that it doesn't get to the board for a decision.
But what do we do tonight then, Dan? Looking at that, that's not a, that's not an approval or a denial, right? Would it be an approval with, yeah, how would we do that?
Well, I mean, I, I think you could potentially, um, I mean, I think you could potentially continue it, you know, to then would have, would provide um an opportunity for.
Then it doesn't go to the board, right? So if we continue this, then, then it's, it's us continuing this and asking staff to work.
Right. Draft your own recommendation. It doesn't have to be staff's recommendation.
No, but I think the intent would be for staff to then work, staff's attorneys and staff to work with the property owners and their attorneys to hopefully come up with a new development agreement, maybe then for the board, uh, for us to consider, you know, that we have potentially zoning considerations like the previous one did. And then that whole package could go then to the board and then the board could potentially pick one or the other. Could be an option to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, potentially you could uh make a motion to continue it.
To continue with.
Right. Which could provide more time to.
I wouldn't allow it to go to the board.
Which personally, if, if we do and renegotiate a development agreement, I'd like to see the provisions in there as planning commission. It seems like it would be helpful for us to understand what the new property owner or what the new tenant might be willing to commit to, you know, and hear from the public and if they think that's, you know, an okay thing to consider. I don't know typically development agreements, you know, don't come before planning commission. And I'm not sure, I would like to the attorney, I think, to know if that's something that's even under our purview or if that's, you know, something that could be tied to a new final flat site plan. It just feels a little premature. But I also don't wanna continue if there's not staff support or attorney's support to attempt to negotiate. Cause then that feels like we're just moving, you know, delaying for no good cause.
I mean, you know, that would, that would be, you know, your recommendation as to if you wanna continue within, um, you know, uh, potentially the town would, would discuss potentially uh revamping a development agreement. That would be, you know, the reason, you'd be continuing to um obtain, you know, further evidence, which would be, you know, the development agreement and allow time for that to, to take place. So, you know.
That's, it's independent of them being in violation of the zoning currently, right? So that, that could proceed however it's gonna proceed regardless of how we deal with this application, right? So that's not gonna change that process at all, right?
Correct.
So I think I should probably go to close the public hearing, um, and then we can just have discussion on how we wanna handle this. Unless you have other, is there other questions for staff?
There's a question for the staff or our attorney. If, could, could we as the planning commission decline the application from the town with a recommendation?
Of declining the application?
Well, we have to make.
We, we can, we can recommend a denial of the application to the town. That's who's, that's, that's our, that's the applicant, right? Or we can approve it, or we can continue the hearing.
But with recommendations that, that the property owner and the town continue.
Sure, we, we could deny and make recommendations.
It's an extremely unique situation where the property is like this.
Hang on just a minute. Uh, good. Are you finished?
Well, it's, it's an extremely.
We're getting into conversation, so I wanna be careful, cause if we're getting into discussion, then I should probably close the public hearing. If we are gonna continue, if we have questions for, I mean, we can continue to consult Dan, that's.
My, my question for Dan or for Stephen is, is can we decline with a recommendation?
Yeah, you could, you could recommend denial, yeah.
And, and include conditions or, yes, we, absolutely.
Conditions and include some language?
I mean, I, I think that the recommendation would be denial itself. I mean, typically the conditions are associated with the approval itself. I mean, obviously the reason, you know, for your denial would be for, you know, the, the town to discuss potential development agreement.
Okay, all right. Mr. Harper.
If we, even if we decline it tonight, there's nothing to stop the town coming back with it later, is there?
Well, no, and I mean, and we're, it's, it's, so again, I think we're just getting into discussion here, so I'm attempting to close the public hearing. Do you have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing so we can discuss, so sorry. Hearing is closed. So we can, we can kind of continue.
There's an alternate suggestion to Lisa's point about leverage. Why don't we recommend approval contingent upon staff and the property owner not coming to an agreement within a year on new on new terms?
Well, I mean, it's, 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 this is unique. I mean, we're, we're in a, I mean, clearly the agreement was that Land Rover moves out, this goes back to CAC. I mean, that's, I mean, if, if we're, I mean, that's planning commission looking at the agreement. We're looking at rezoning. They have, I mean, it, it, I mean, there's little doubt in my mind that it should go back to CAC, you know, at least that's what I'm thinking. But I'm also respectful of the fact that we've had businesses in town that, that have been operating that facility. And that it would be appropriate to have farther discussions with them to see if they can accommodate the current use that's in there now.
Feels to me that there's no harm in continuing for a month and letting staff and the attorneys try and come up with a potential agreement that, you know, we are, the situation won't be, you know, having it remain, they're already there, they're not receiving complaints, having it remain for another, you know, thirty days and seeing what could be worked out. I agree, they're in breach of the agreement, but I think.
Which isn't really relevant to our, to what, I mean, that, that, there, there being a breach is a, is a separate issue from
But it's what's triggering the re. No, cause that's what's triggering the rezoning application, so.
No, they're in viola, no, um, wait a minute, so no, they're, they're, um.
They're, they're in violation of the agreement cause when Range Rover stopped uh activity at the property.
Yeah, the minute Range.
More than a month, I just read it again.
The minute Land Rover left that facility, right? They had a responsibility to not continue that use in that space and, and.
Agreed.
And adhere to the zone of the CAC zoning, right? So they, that's, I mean, that was their responsibility.
I agree, and I think that is a frustrating situation.
I agree.
They did not approach us, they weren't proactive about that, and I think that that, I don't think that's, you know, in any way should perform a good place to be starting from, you know, with the town on this. But I also recognize that this, you know, I think to Mr. Harper's point, this is a challenging site to redevelop. The market metrics maybe aren't there right now to support redevelopment and what's the alternative? Things change over time and twenty years is a long time and I don't, I think, I think, you know, to not consider renegotiation of a development agreement without understanding the um kind of maybe unintended consequences of looking at that, just feels premature. That's just where I'm sitting. I just feel like we should proceed cautiously on um vacating a site.
Sure, and I mean, I'm open to that, and whether the site gets vacated or not, I mean, RAC, either, either zoning doesn't permit this use.
Cause the use, I would agree.
And that, that's independent of what we decide tonight. They, I mean, I mean, there are legal proceedings that I, I have no idea where they're gonna go. I don't know whether they're gonna require them to vacate because they're in violation of the agreement, right? I mean, this is a zoning change request, thus, that's all we're faced with, right? That's, that's it. And what happens outside of this, of the town's request to rezone it? I mean, that, 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 I mean, it's completely outside of this request. Am I correct, Dan? That's how, I mean, what we, what we do here, whether we keep this, whether we recommend denial or approval of this request. There's a violation that's there today and, and that may or may not proceed. I, what, I don't even think we have any say on how that, how that proceeds, yes. And how, yes, and how that gets enforced and how proceeds. I, I agree that there should be farther discussion about this. I, I agree with you a hundred percent that, that, that there should be an op, that, that there should be an opportunity for the existing occupant to discuss this farther, but whether that, how that plays into our approval or denial of this request, because I mean, either the, the use is invalid in RAC or CAC.
Well, they've already made that determination that it was. I don't think we can go back and change that now from a legal perspective and now say that it's not a permitted use. I think the town would be a pretty big risk. There's been a car dealership there for twenty years. I don't know that we wanna try and make that argument. But um, from the attorney's perspective, the development agreement would say it needs to be rezoned back to CAC is the cleaner way to go than rezone it back to CAC, start fresh with a new development agreement and then come back and rezone it? I mean, or, I mean, that, is there a way to amend the development agreement or redo a development agreement given the provisions in the original development agreement that, that has to go back if these parties, you know, if this party leaves?
I, I mean, you know, the way the development agreement reads as of right now is that it was, it was associated with a rezoning application that made the change from CAC to RAC. And the development agreement in, in itself had provision basically stating that if, for whatever reason, it no longer operates a Land Rover center, it then reverts back to, so that's, that's kind of where, but that all falls into place. I mean, in terms of, um, I guess my understanding, and, and maybe you can kind of, you know, fill me in on this, but um, is that the RAC and the CAC both didn't specifically allow for, um, for automotive dealership itself, correct?
Correct, but the, I would clarify that the RAC zoning was the zoning that was designated to allow the, I mean, the reason that it was upzoned was to allow the automotive use. So the automotive use, although that it wasn't specifically um stated in the Rock, Rock Creek Ranch PUD as a use, the determination was made by the staff recommendation that the uh, that the RAC zoning would allow for the, or is the appropriate use for an auto.
And we entered into an agreement to, to permit that use.
And then the, the exceptions or the clarifications and all the, all the, you know, the distinctions that were made between a typical car dealership and the Land Rover use was, was really to justify this use in this location, which is surrounded by CAC zoning, bordered by residential, that type of stuff. It wasn't to justify the use itself um within RAC zoning, because I think that everyone agreed that that was the appropriate zoning for an automobile, an automobile dealership use.
And the other element to this that we haven't really touched on is, is the impact to the residents in the area, right? So, and I did drive through there, I just wanted to see what this looked like and it's okay, garage doors were open, there was a truck sticking out the back of the garage door, kind of jammed down on top of the truck. And there's some older vehicles back there and it's, it's, it's different, you know, than what it was before. I mean, I, I can um respect, was it Rick Waller, I think it was, the, who's the someone at Rock Creek? I mean, he's, he's, the use has been okay, but the concern about a service center backing up to residential area is a valid concern, right? So, I mean, those garages are open and there's work going on. I mean, that's, that's a little bit different than, and they're working on all cars. It's not just servicing Land, Land Rovers. It's becoming a service center as well as a used car dealership, right? And that, that is what's happening, at least from my, from the visual that I saw um in the area that we at least need to keep that in mind as well, as well as the, the business issues, so.
I, I wasn't privy with the uh Range Rover dealership coming in in the first place, but I mean, there, there's not a Range Rover you can buy for less than thirty thousand dollars. So all those vehicles back there, the new ones and the used ones were, you know, sixty thousand dollars plus.
Yeah.
So they're all kind of high-end luxury vehicles.
So my only concern is, you know, and it's, I think we're right. I mean, I think by the letter of what is written on there that this should be back to CAC. But I think that um, you know, from my standpoint, I've got several facilities that I've been part of that have been left vacant for years because the use has changed and, you know, and it's not something that I wanna see because I drive past it every day, right? And it actually took me a while to realize that somebody was, you know, utilizing that space. Every day I drove past and went into Starbucks, I would see, you know, forty cars right there in the parking lot. And that's not the way it is today, and it may be someday, um, as their business takes off. But um, you know, from my standpoint, I wanna recommend that, that the town takes time um to work something out. But I also agree that the, to the letter of that agreement, um, this needs to go back to CAC. But it might be something that the board needs to, you know, just take our recommendation and spend some time, direct the town, staff to spend some time working something out. And if it can't be reached, then it can't, and then the board determines.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this is appropriate to.
Well, that's what the, this application is asking us to approve or decline. And according to the agreement, that, that's what it's supposed to do.
And if we wanna continue it, we have to have, I mean, we have to have reason.
Well, if we decline it.
Right, we have to define reason.
Decline it from moving from RAC to C.
We have to have reason.
Back to CAC, we have to have a very strong reason for doing that. And legally, I don't think we do. I mean, it's all, I just read through this for the third.
Oh, no, it's very, it seems very clear.
I mean, there's, you know, the, the breach by developers slash towns remedies, item number five A and B. It's very clear what has to happen, so.
Mr. Harper.
I think we've all agreed that if the Land Rover dealer had wanted to continue there, we'd have been happy to have the Land Rover dealership there for another twenty years. If, if the Land.
Sorry, let's just bring it closer so they can hear you out there too.
If the Land Rover dealer had left and uh, the proposal had been to bring a BMW dealer in there or Audi dealer in there or another high-end car dealer in there, it would have been the same uh quality of vehicles and the same kind of service and the same kind of clients that Land Rover had. I mean, would it have been in the town's interest to say this should revert to CAC and that the business should leave? I, I kind of doubt it. I mean, my concern is that.
But it does, I mean, it's clear. It's, it's absolutely clear when, when, I mean, there's.
We can make a recommendation to.
We can make a, yeah, but I mean.
To approve this application from the town, as we're from.
But my concern is, my only, my, my main concern is that, as the owner said, that uh, you know, that this, I mean, I mean, if, if, if the cars that are being sold are in the ten to thirty thousand dollar range, that's a different kind of dealership with a different kind of clientele uh uh than the Land Rover dealership had. In some ways, that's a different kind of use. It's still an automotive use, but it's not the same kind of use. It may be a perfectly fine use, but I, I mean, I, I, I mean, in practical terms, it seems to me that when the town signed the agreement with the Land Rover dealer, it was basically agreeing that that site was going to be an auto-related site for as long as there was an auto-related facility on it.
To some degree, there, there was, I mean, if you, I mean, looking at that, the, the agreement, I mean, there were. I mean, there were, there were, there's a lot of discussion and question and concern about a dealership coming in. I mean, and Land Rover was, I mean, they, I mean, they made a point of being a very accommodating user for that area, and so those discussions haven't had, have been had, and I, I wouldn't say a BMW dealer or a Toyota dealership or, or a Chevy dealership could be any more or less, you know, of a good, good partner in that space, right? I mean, it could be, I mean, anybody could make those deals and make that, and create that relationship, but that's, that's just not what we're faced with right now. We're faced with, I mean, we're, we're faced with a zoning request, and I think we're all in agreement that, that we should recommend to the board that this, that this be looked at closely, right? And though we're not, I mean, I mean, that's, but that's, that's a little bit outside of our purview right now, so.
If you, if we, if we recommend to the board that, that we approve this requ, that we approve this request, and the board, I mean, supposing the board approves it, that would seem to me to close the business down, wouldn't it? I mean, is that good for the business? Is it good for the town?
Which is back to my point, which I feel like the town should.
I don't want to get hung up on, I mean, driving a legal issue that damages both parties strikes me as being a lose-lose situation when everybody really wants a win-win situation.
But it's not a planning commission applicant to planning commission. I mean, we don't have that power to, I mean, that's not, I mean, we're being asked to execute a zoning change based on an agreement, based on a legal agreement that was made in 1998, whenever it was, right? That's what we're being asked to do right now. If we want to provide other recommendations, I, I mean, I think it's well within our purview to, to, to put that in our recommendation to the board, but I'm struggling with.
I, I'm not going to vote to do something that's a lose-lose deal for both parties. I'm just not.
No, that's fine. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm new, I'm new to this, so I don't have your back.
I mean, we'd have to have a reason to deny, we'd have to have a reason to deny, a legal, I mean, a legal reason to deny. We can't just say, gosh, we don't really like this, it's not good for the town from a business perspective. I mean, I don't think that's, that's, we'd have to have a solid legal reason to deny this. I mean, you, you need to tell us why. I mean, I mean, and we can work with Dan to figure out what that language is and, and how we can do it, but, I mean, we're, we're, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Well, there's a provision for assignment in the development agreement. It indicates that it, you know, I think in an ideal scenario, if somebody else who can operate a Land Rover dealership, but I think that it does have an assignment provision and I would love to see staff and the attorneys and the property owner and the existing, you know, the new tenant in there, try and see if there's a way to, you know, to either assign this agreement if, you know, if that's an option. We then either recommend approval with that as a condition or we continue it while that But it, it feels like the, you know, the board, I think in an ideal scenario, the board would have, you know, two things to consider, you know, a rezone request. I think it's, I think it's really premature to do a rezone request without, you know, examining this assignment provision in the development agreement. Again, where the planning commission purview falls in all the development agreements, I know typically we don't look at that. That's where I am with it.
So then we continue it. We, we ask the, the applicant, the town and the property owner to sit down and work out some things and come back.
I see no harm in doing that.
To, to approve it, then we're giving the board an approval of changing the zoning. You know, and my thought is to, to approve it, but with the recommendation that the town and the property owner work out a, a new agreement that can go forward from here. Because I think as Range Rover has been a great neighbor for 20 years, the improvements they've done on that property have made it specifically to an automotive dealership of some sort, that it makes it prohibitive to re, you know, redevelop the property. I mean, Jake explained that to us, and I, I hear that clearly. We'd put anybody in the hole to try and, you know, I heard neighbors talk to me about that property and they'd said, they said they'd want to see a brewery there.
We want to see a brewery everywhere.
But to, to redevelop that property in a brewery, it would cost you millions just to, to get it to, to back to zero.
So, Dan, as far as if we wanted to continue this in the spirit of gathering more information, which would, that would be our reason.
Right.
For doing that, and that's our purview, right?
Yep, you just make a motion and.
And then we would either continue that to a date certain or continue indefinitely. I mean, it could be, I mean, so be the applicant, I'd assume the town then would want a set date certain, right? We'd have to do that tonight, right? I think our other option is it being open-ended, which, at which the town probably doesn't want to do, but those are our two options, right?
Date certain, yeah.
And so, I'm, I mean, I'm open for that. I mean, I'm, I'm game for that.
Me, too.
I don't know what others think. What is it that, so when this is done, right, so if we do continue this hearing, can we articulate to the applicant what we would expect to happen and to come back with? And we will need to make a decision at that point if we do this, so.
Would Planning Commission get to review a potentially renegotiated development agreement or not? If, if we don't, then I.
I also.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my struggle, is what do they, what do we, what's going to come back?
Passing this on to the town board.
Yeah, I mean, this doesn't, this doesn't change the zoning, it doesn't change the agreement. We can't ask them to change the agreement.
I don't have guidance yet, but I do have, I guess, just some context. I think the reason that this is difficult is because we don't have any parameters of what the application is, and because we don't have an application. We have, I mean, well, the application is to rezone, we don't have an applic, what everyone's trying to think about is the application for the new user, and we don't know what that is or how they're different from the existing use. And so if you were to rezone the property or go forward with the proposal and rezone the property to C A C, the applicant, you know, and you could even tell them that they, or maybe recommend that, or the board give them a certain amount of time to file a comparable rezoning request in order to come back into compliance, get it back to R A C and, and establish their own development agreement, in which case you would see the actual application component of the proposal, which is most of what you guys are talking about concern-wise. And then the development agreement would again fall back to the board to negotiate in terms of, you know, whatever covenants they're kind of suggesting or agreement in order to ensure, but a lot of that would also get addressed through a development application, a re, you know, a rezone and an F D P that clarifies what the parameters for this particular use is. And that's if you're thinking that an auto use is still appropriate out here, which you seem to be entertaining. If you're not, then I feel like the best, the best direction is to, you know, you know, agree to the, or recommend approval and, and push this to the town or to decide whether or not, I mean, but we haven't really outlined your, and I haven't really prepared any, you know, potential scenarios other than recommend approval, recommend denial, because I wasn't aware of any, you know, other discussions being on the table. But that, to me, is seemingly why this is so difficult, is that we don't have any idea of what that scope of that new use is, and staff hasn't seen it, you haven't had, you know, the ability to look at it yourself, I haven't had the ability to look at it to, to even, you know, venture a guess as to whether or not a development agreement could bring this into a place of, you know, you know, comparable compliance or, you know, even stricter compliance than what the Land Rover dealership came, you know, came in as, so.
I mean, we're, we're in essence, we're asking the applicant, the town, to come back with a different, with, with, with different zoning. Right, I mean, that's, that's my question, I mean, it's, it's.
Well, wouldn't, I mean, since this agreement is in place, if the town made an agreement with the new tenants to continue their use, they would basically have to come back and propose that the zoning stay the way it is, wouldn't they? Isn't that what the town would be asking us to do, to leave the zoning the way?
The zoning would need to stay the way it is for an auto use to be.
So what would be coming to us would be a request to leave the zoning the way it is rather than going back as described in this agreement.
Well, I don't know if it needs to come back to us, is if there's a provision in this agreement that you can assign it, and then it just gets assigned and then the zoning stays in place, which is why I feel like this is a little bit premature, maybe, if there's still some provisions where, or some, you know, an end game scenario where the existing new tenant stays there, that maybe, but I don't know that the town board is, you know, going to entertain that.
And I'm, I mean, I'm struggling with just allowing this to remain an auto dealership and service center. I am. I mean, these, these guys might be awesome, they might be great partners, they might not make it five years, but it's, then it's, if we, if we allow this, right, then that is a dealership, and, I mean, unless we create another provision, right, in agreement with them that says, when you leave, it's, you know, then it's going to revert to C A C, right? Then we got to go through that process again. So I am struggling with, I, I really am struggling with how we can proceed. I think, I think some additional discussion needs to be had. I'm just, it, it doesn't feel like it needs to be us who instigates it, right? I mean, I'm, I'm open to, to continuing this and asking, again, we got to tell them what, we got to tell the applicant what, what the end game is if we send them back and if we continue this hearing to gather more evidence to result in what, right? So in that, that I'm still not clear on, on what that is, because if it's a development agreement, I mean, I guess if you can pull off a development agreement between now and the date certain and then make a recommendation that, that, and then, and then the recommendation changes and we keep it R A C, but.
Right, then the application just gets withdrawn, right? I mean, if you can.
Or the application, yeah, then the.
Sign the development agreement to somebody else and then there is no, there is no application therefore, you know, to rezone, so.
But will that need to go before the board, right? So the application, if.
The development agreement.
The development agreement.
Would need to go before the board then.
Right.
But not the rezone, essentially.
Well, I've not renegotiated a development agreement outside of an application that actually had a final development plan associated with it, so I don't know how that gets done, I can't comment to that.
Yeah.
And I think that's just it. I think we're making some presumptions from a legal perspective. Making some presumptions from a legal perspective, you know, kind of one way or the other here, which is why I think my inclination is just to hit pause, you know, continue and just make sure legally, you know, that all our options have been considered. It sounds like there's some new information that potentially has come to light today or pretty recently, maybe, that, you know, staff or the attorneys need some time to evaluate. I'm looking to you, I guess, to see if you agree with that statement or not, you know, I don't know.
I, I mean, I'm struggling too, because it's, it is a town application, so it's, it's muddled by, you know, public comment today, which is totally understandable, but, you know, the, I don't know where we go from there. I mean, in terms of figuring out, I almost feel like the town board needs to weigh in and clarify whether or not they feel like this use is just simply not appropriate, in which case there's no need to discuss a, you know, a renegotiated development agreement if the use is still appropriate.
Well, yeah, I mean, that is a good point. I mean, what are we gaining by continuing this or denying it or approving it? I mean, it, it needs to move forward to the town board. I think a considerable amount of discussion's been had here. I think bullet pointing our concerns to the town board is, is appropriate, but I don't, I'm, I'm struggling with what our options could be to, to do anything either than approve, either recommend approval or denial, and if we're going to deny it, we, we need to have a legal reason to deny it, because there's a pretty clear agreement sitting in front of us that this needs to be done.
Is it possible to continue it on the basis that we're going to make some recommendations to the town board?
But we can't.
So that's where I guess we could, but if we're not going to see the amended development agreement, then there's no point in continuing.
Right, that doesn't come to us.
So our recommendation.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter if it doesn't come to us if the town board deals with it, does it?
Well, then there'd be no reason to continue.
Yeah, that's why.
To continue it to bring it back to us, and if we're not going to review the development agreement, then I feel like potentially just a recommendation of approval with a big caveat that says, however, and I don't know, we can work with Dan on however to phrase this, you know, however, Planning Commission strongly urges the town board to consider, you know, renegotiating a development agreement to see if there is, you know, agreeable circumstances or conditions. That's kind of where I'm thinking, maybe there's no point to continue if we're not going to see the development agreement anyway.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think our role in this is to, you know, either accept it or deny it, and it sounds like the developer agreement can be worked out with the board. I think we just kind of have a sunset in there of we approve the rezoning or we recommend approval of the rezoning contingent on the board not, you know, agreeing to a new developer agreement substantially similar to the last one within, within a certain timeframe so that staff in the town has leverage. Otherwise, I, I don't see a point in continuing it.
Well, in that case, can we deny it? If we deny it, will it go to the board anyway?
You need to give us a pretty good reason to deny it, but, I mean, if you can come up with a re, I mean, I, we need to talk with Dan about what our reason for denying it would be.
Well, it would fall under the, the criteria that's included in sixteen, seven, thirty, whether the proposed zoning furthers the goals and policies of a comprehensive plan, any other appropriate approved plans, and then in particular whether the adoption of proposed amendment would necessitate comprehensive plan amendments. In other words, you'd have to couch it in terms of why it didn't meet that criteria.
Yeah.
Just have an idea, just a thought. Maybe we propose a five or 10-minute recess while the attorney drafts a condition, we can then review related to recommending approval with a caveat that, you know, not a caveat, but just a kind of a, however, the Planning Commission urges the board to, you know.
Well, I mean, essentially, what, when I'm.
The approval would revert it, but we, you know, we'd be open to the board considering.
Sure, well, I mean, potentially you'd have.
An amended development.
A condition that, you know, the town shall engage and discuss the potential for a new development agreement or other, you know, applicable application or otherwise with the current owner. Does that sound about what you're?
So what do you guys think?
And I guess, I don't know why this is, I mean, this has been in place, when did, I forget, the land, when, when did?
Ninety-eight.
I never came in. How long ago did the Land Rover dealership move? Must be going away.
Oh, just months, right?
Months.
Several months.
They were out of their location by July of this year, is my understanding, yeah.
So we're six months into this and it appears that there's a legal discussion, but some sorts has started between the new tenants and the landowners.
There's no legal discussion. They were, I mean, they've been told they're in violate, they were sent a letter saying that they were in violation of, of zoning and, and it's basically they need to vacate space.
I thought I heard Mr. Loftus say that they had come back and that they'd been told to leave this between the attorneys and all that kind of stuff.
Well, yeah, they responded and they're challenging, they're challenging, so, so the town sent a, oh, is it called again? What, the town sent?
I believe it was a, what, a notice of violation, Mr.
Notice of violation, the, the, the owner just wrote back and, and basically challenged that, and that's where it stands today. Is that correct, Dan? There's been no additional?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not as familiar with that aspect of it, but, I mean, the, the aspect is before you.
That's where it's at. So there's no, I don't know that there's discussions going on, there probably will be, but there.
Well, I think that's true, that there probably will be, so why, why do we have to consider this now?
Because we have an application in front of us.
So why don't we continue it and give the legal discussions a chance to go on?
Because if we, if we can, well, so if, if we, so I feel like we're sort of going around in circles here, but if we continue it, right, then we have, we have to, we have to tell the applicant what happens during that continuation and what we expect to come back, and the only thing that can happen is a development agreement, further discussions to see if they can come up with a developer agreement, just keep nodding if I'm doing okay here, a developer agreement to permit the existing use to, to stay in place. We can't see that developer agreement, it doesn't come to us, it goes to the board, right? So it's all going to go to the board anyway. So do we, so we could just send it to the board and let them deal with this, because there's, there's a component in here that we don't, that's not our responsibility, our only responsibility is to deal with a zoning request from the applicant, which happens to be the town, right?
I'm not comfortable recommending denial because then we're left, I think, in a limbo with, then our development agreement is no longer valid, right? That's been breached, we have no protections to leave the zoning in place.
Yeah, I think it's clear.
So I, I won't be voting for denial, I would be voting for approval with maybe a condition related to, you know, attempting to renegotiate. That's my position on that.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody can convince us why to continue it and what we could do with it, I'm, I'll listen, but I'm struggling and I'm not hearing that yet, but, so.
You know, I'd, I'd like to echo Commissioner Miller's comments about moving forward. We don't have any legal recourse to say, to, to say no to this or continue it.
Well, we, we can continue it, but.
We can approve it because that's what it's instructing us to do with recommendations, that the town and the applicant, which is the town, and the property owner, and possibly the tenant, work out a new agreement and give them six months to figure that out, and if they can't figure it out in six months, then the zoning changes or eighteen months.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can, yeah, write up however.
Give them an opportunity to figure this out.
That's what I.
There's, there's, there's no.
And the board may or may not do that. We don't, you know, I mean, it's a question of whether they. Right, we can make that recommendation. I think it's a right thing to do. I think this is a, this is a just, I'm, I'm not, not happy about this situation any more than you are, Commissioner Harper. I, I, I mean, this, this is unfortunate, but I mean, us, us as a commission, we're, we're, we're dealing with an application to, to, to rezone based on an agreement that was, that's clear. And I, I can't, I can't come up with a reason to continue. I can't see a benefit to continue, right? I can't, if, if we can come up with a benefit to continue that it's something that would come back to us and we can continue this, I'll bring it up three more times if you want to keep thinking about it or we can recess for five or 10 minutes if you want to think about it, but I'm struggling with, with how we could do this or what, what benefit there would be to.
If we wouldn't see the amended development agreement, then I don't think there's any reason for us to continue the meeting other than to just pause the whole thing to give everybody time, but I also don't know that that's, you know, necessary.
And that doesn't include you from voting against it, for or against it. You can vote either way on this and believe me, I've been voted against things that I didn't agree with as well. So I mean, it's, it's.
And that could be part of the recommendation of, in my opinion, approving the application with that condition. And that between, you know, now and six months that the town and the property owner possibly see, figure out a new agreement, then that's what gets sent to the board.
Well, and so just, I mean, being clear, what's, so when we, when we approve this, even with a condition, I mean, this will go on town board's agenda as soon, I'm guessing, since the town is the applicant requesting this, it'll probably go pretty quickly to the, to the board. And so they will entertain this as an agenda item and, you know, whether they take our recommendation and, yeah, that's hard for us to say, but I agree with you. I, I think this should be given an appropriate amount of time. I don't know if I'd want to put a timeline on it.
Right.
Because they can knock it out in two months and let's knock it out in two months, right? But I mean, I think an appropriate amount of time to, to renegotiate a development agreement with the current user.
What do you think about something like this? The planning commission recommends that the town through town staff and attorneys negotiate and in good faith an amendment to the development agreement, something to that effect? What are you thinking on, what are you thinking on?
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially kind of the, the language that I was kind of proposing, you know, that, that I'm not going to add in, you know, town staff shall engage and discuss potential for a new development agreement or amendment to the current, to the current development agreement or applicable and or applicable application with the current owner concerning operation of the current business within the existing zoning.
We also recommend that the town board do so as well. Can we recommend with the town board then?
You recommend, what, what would you be recommending?
To town staff, attorneys and the town board? Just that our recommend, that our recommendation, I think, applies to kind of.
Town staff, yes.
Town staff and the.
Town, town staff and the town board, right?
Yeah, sure.
But they take this seriously. All right, you want to?
I want to hear what you've got.
Sure.
So I have town, town staff and board of, the, I want to say the, the town, including town staff and board of trustee shall engage and discuss the potential for a new development agreement or amendment to the current development agreement or applicable app and or applicable application with the current owner concerning operation of the current business.
Can we ask the property owner if they are amenable to that condition? Nope? Yep?
The public.
Not. I think, yeah, we just provide them the opportunity.
So then I'll make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number ten, with a condition as noted. Oh, sorry, I'm pulled up, hold on.
Yep.
If anybody has it pulled up.
I have got it here or somewhere.
Where is it?
It's here. Yeah, you got it.
Recommend approval of resolution ten, series twenty eighteen, a resolution of the planning commission of the town is fair recommending approval of an amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development to Rezone Lot One Black Ones and Ten Year Venture nine flat four, sorry, for Regional Activity Center RAC zoning to Community Activity Center CAC zoning in case RZN dash twenty eighteen dash O two with the condition as read into the record by City Attorney Harvey.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner, and second. Commissioner Miller. All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, we have one opposed, Commissioner Harper. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. All right, yeah, I think we, let me see, round all my, all my crazy notes, so what's that? Yeah, oh, so we do have, yeah, we do have a, we do have item five on the agenda. Do I need to open and continue this?
Yeah.
Okay. Close another hearing. Good, all right, so. All right, we have item five is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution approving a final development plan for block twenty six and associated subdivision plat for blocks twenty six and twenty seven. We have proof of publication, okay? We do have proof of publication. Go ahead and open the public hearing. And this, there's been a request, I assume by the applicant to table this until.
It's been, it's been encouraged by the, by town staff.
Tables used a one.
And we've, we, we're not prepared to set the date for it. We're still targeting January eighth, but I'd recommend we table it indefinitely.
Okay.
I don't want to schedule you guys for a special meeting on January twenty eighth and then get you here to.
To continue it again, okay.
To table it again, so I want the, the certainty, so it'll probably take another week or two to get that, but.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing indefinitely. So we want to take that on or no?
I'm sorry?
Do, yeah.
Do you need to make a motion to continue the meeting indefinitely?
Yeah, we'd put it to a motion.
I was saying you're continuing the public hearing yourself.
All right, sorry. Go ahead.
So moved?
Does that work?
To continue.
Move to continue, yeah.
Item number five.
Yeah, item, public hearing and adoption of resolution approving a final development plan for block twenty six and associated subdivision plat for blocks twenty six and twenty seven. So moved by Commissioner.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
You could, or, or until such time as, you know, right.
Right, we'll just do it indefinitely. I mean, that's not language we typically use because we don't have a date certain, so it's, it's fine.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all right, cool. Commissioner Reese, a second, all in favor?
All right.
Hi, that's unanimous, all right. Don't close it. All right, and staff announcements and?
There's actually a few announcements. So town board work session is next Tuesday at five thirty. Dinner will be served and that is for Thrive to come in with their concept plan for blocks fourteen and fifteen.
What is that again? Sorry, the next Tuesday?
That's Tuesday, so it's an off town board day. They didn't want to meet on Monday right after Thanksgiving, so we, we scheduled that for Tuesday, the twenty seventh.
Six o'clock?
Five thirty and, you know, planning commission is always invited to those concept plan meetings for development to participate. And then we have a planning meeting scheduled for block twenty five, a final development plan from Remington, and that's scheduled for twelve eighteen at our normal meeting time. No planning commission meeting is now scheduled for, or we, we don't have a planning commission meeting, maybe that's an easier way to put it, for twelve four because we were targeting the northwest update from Clarion on that day and they asked for more time. So we've pushed that meeting out to January fifteenth. So they'll come back and update you. They just want more time to get all of their materials and recommendations together.
And there's nothing else will come up to go on there, right? It's too late for anything else.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So we can get rid of that.
That ship sailed. So we won't have a meeting on twelve four and we are again targeting the eleven eight meeting. So your first meeting in January would typically fall on New Year's Day. That day, our office is closed and I won't bring you in for a meeting, but if we do get things together for Thrive, we'd like to be able to schedule the meeting on January eighth, which is the second Tuesday of the month, in which case we'd have weeks of back to back meetings. But like I said, I'll confirm with you as soon as I'm able to confirm that the application will be ready.
And you said nothing in December eighteenth?
No, December eighteenth is Remington. So nothing on December fourth and we do have a, a PC meeting on December eighteenth.
Okay.
So is the fourth canceled?
Fourth is canceled. That's an easier way to put it.
That, that's the same as, that's all the same as the email you sent us, I think, isn't it?
Um, I don't know. I think the last email, maybe, maybe. Okay. I've sent too many emails to keep track, but the Clarion thing's fairly new news after the last meeting on the Superior Marketplace, the RC approached me and asked if we could push it and I know that this isn't going to get to the town board till at least the end of January, if not February, so I figured you guys would give them more time too. I hope that was okay.
Would we have some time on the?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, is that our next? December eighteenth? For a short work session item I wanted to consider, just have a discussion about a checklist of sorts for downtown applications coming forward from downtown Superior, just a checklist that I've been working on a little bit. Just to make sure they're meeting all the requirements of the design guidelines so that we can actually just see a clear list of design. I don't know if we can do this or not, just want to have a discussion about it, right?
We can discuss it, yeah.
And it would actually be a, a requirement. I'd like to put the requirement, consider putting the requirement on the applicant to, to complete this so that we can actually.
We, we do, we, we try to strike a, a balance between clarifying where they're meeting the, each and every criteria because that would be quite a lengthy, so where, where I require, what I require them to do is actually tell me when there is an exception request. And that's when sometimes we have pushback on these applications where I tell them, like for Superior Shores, for instance, they came in and told me that they were meeting all the requirements and I told them I disagreed and outlined, but that's really on them. So I just won't let them go forward until they clarify, you know, and actually have done the, the, the task of going through the application and clarify where, even if it's, you know, fairly mundane, they do need to clarify building orientation or, you know, that the, you know, the roof heights don't step down as suggested by the, by the guideline. So you will see where exceptions are, otherwise it is presumed and staff does verify it ourselves that they are meeting those requirements. Otherwise, I think we're going to have, I mean, I, everything's already getting longer and I've been told I need to be shorter, but I also am told I need to be comprehensive, so. So I would love a checklist. I mean, it'd be great if we just looked at a checklist and were like, yep, this one's good, but.
But the guidelines.
We can certainly explore it.
The guidelines are about one hundred and fifty-six pages or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
They all need to be specific, actually.
Right, and they're very.
See, I don't know what that, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what that would look like, but, but.
But I mean, if, I mean.
Well, where there are, I mean, for sure the exceptions and then why they're making the exception, you know.
Right. And but one of the things we could try to work to incorporate if it's clear and they are in the FDP, but the FDP applications, you know, sometimes are twenty pages and sometimes are fifty and we might be getting one that's a hundred. I try to get these tables and if you want to get tables either incorporated into staff's memo or incorporated into the applicant's narrative to kind of like break down parking or, you know, this is what the required setback is, this is what's proposed so that it's just easier to see rather than, you know, find it in a written.
And that's, and that's been the challenge is just finding all this in the written.
Right.
Yeah, and the, I mean, being, I mean, if, if that exists, that, that would be great to just have that conversation and see whether something we could look at and electronically, I don't need.
Feedback about how it could be more clear for you guys to understand or if you want to organize differently so that the, you know, the, you know, there's a kind of a quick and dirty summary of the, the main things, you know, building height setbacks, that type of stuff at the beginning, then we could do that or, so we can certainly have the conversation about how to make that easier. What was else was I going to say? Oh, we also need to, on that agenda, we also need to discuss your guys' work plan for the next year. So the twelve eighteen meeting, we should discuss their work plan. Your, your work plan. And that's kind of tricky and it was last year too because, I mean, some of that depends on what decision is made, but I think you want to anticipate that, you know, a favorable outcome or where you, wherever you think the northwest project is going and start thinking about whether or not there's anything else on the agenda that you want to tackle for next year, so.
Yeah, and I would encourage everyone to just think of planning areas in the area that need attention. If there's something that's undermined or, I know we, there was discussion around eighty-eighth, right? That was a big topic last year that, that we can.
Is there any activity on?
Round about, round about Indiana, yeah, that was.
There's a grading permit, I understand, and I think that, you know, there's platted lots that are available for them to come in and ask for building permits on already.
What, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Activity on Rogers Farm. So there's been some grading activity already.
We talk about Old Town, we talk about the marketplace, but there's a pretty large area.
Well, yeah, that, so that, the first two blocks are zoned and that, that won't come before, that doesn't need to come before us, right?